Good evening and welcome to the May 22nd, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:04 at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street. LakeCam is recording. Is there anyone else recording for record? Hearing, no. Okay, um, so we do have a quorum tonight. Chairwoman McEckern is not here, so I'll be running the meeting. Dan Wilga, David Lodge, Jack Lynch, and myself. First item, public hearing for 2 and 4 Bedford Street. I'm going to recuse myself, so I'm going to have Member Wilga open the meeting.
So, agenda item number one, public hearing, site plan review for 2 and 4 Bedford Street upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by Twin Boys LLC for the proposed contractor base presented by Zenith Consulting Engineering, possible vote. What I'm going to do right now is read the official notice of public hearing, the legal notice. The Lakeville Planning Board pursuant to the Town of Lakeville Code Bylaws, Chapter 270, Section 270-6.7, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, at 7 o'clock PM at the Lakeville Police Station, 323 Bedford Street. The purpose of the public hearing will be to receive information and public comment of the following site plan review application. 2 and 4 Bedford Street, the applicant, Twin Boys LLC, seeks site plan review and approval for a proposed business park consisting of four buildings and associated site improvements. Three buildings are for contractor bays and one building consists of one contractor bay and 11 offices. I will need a motion to open this hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Okay. Do we need another, uh, another opening statement? Are we good?
Nope, you can just have them.
Okay. Mr. Beloso, floor is open.
So, I believe all third-party review comments have been previously addressed with the committee and we've made a couple of changes with elevations that we guys have. That's all I have.
So, just from my standpoint, looking over the plans and everything, I did not have any additional comments on the plans. I thought that a lot of those areas were satisfied in terms of some of the landscaping and so forth that was brought up. There was the fencing, which was also discussed as well, which appeared to me to be addressed as well. The facades on the buildings that we, that with the revised renderings also looked okay to me as well. So, you know, I think you folks did a great valiant effort of getting that to the finish line, so thank you. Anybody else?
I was pleased to see the change in the facade of the building, the materials that you used. What is that material, by the way?
I'm using, oh, it's metal.
Is it the facade of the building, metal? Okay, the signage, I thought, this kind of monument-type sign, I thought was quite nice. In keeping with kind of the character of Lakeville, if you will. And, um, the landscaping out front, that we had talked about, had to be high or low and all that. Has that been addressed and that's satisfied to everybody?
So, the only thing that comes to mind with the landscaping was the ever, I think you mentioned evergreens in there as part of the landscape plan that evergreens would be placed in there. I think it was six foot tall. Do we know what kind of evergreens those were? Was it an arborvitae type, something that's, that's?
I know they requested that they were, you know, over four feet tall, so I think we just... Yeah, we asked for six feet tall.
Six feet, which is great. Gets a really good establishment going there, so, and I think the butters would be very pleased with that. So, you know, as long as it's a good hardy type, that's deer resistant, that kind of thing, because we know how the deer are with arborvitae's and whatnot. As long as it can be well-maintained and whatnot, I think that would suffice as well.
Kathy, Michelle seen this? She seen this?
If that was from the last meeting, then yes.
As I understand, they seem to admit the request that we have. John, Ian, anybody, Ben?
I'm all set with it.
So Kathy?
So you want to continue this until the next hearing, when Amy will be present? And then they can go through the approval?
So our town attorney counsel, Amy Quessell, will be present at the June 12th meeting, so we want to continue this hearing for that time. So, at this point, do we want to close?
Can I ask?
Oh, sorry, any other questions?
Terry Beloso, also Twin Boys. Do you have any questions that, why can't you make a decision? Do you have any other questions?
We have a set of conditions that have to be drawn up, right?
Right.
Right, but you can dictate those tonight, you can draw them up, and we can accept them? Or you can't do that?
So, town attorney does that?
Oh, the attorney has to do that? So attorney's here for every decision you make?
Again, the town attorney needs to be here for...
I'm just asking, sir.
For drawing up...
Attorney's here for every drawing up, every order of conditions?
For drawing up special conditions, yes.
For special?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, anybody from the audience, questions? Okay.
Yes, so we have to vote to continue to next meeting?
Yep, so, um, we're going to, I need a motion for somebody to continue this meeting to June 12th.
Continue the hearing for Twin Boys LLC to our next meeting of May 12th.
June 12th.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion continues. We'll see you folks June 12th.
If your attorney's here?
Yeah, she'll be here.
Okay.
All right. She was calling me during that and I wasn't going to answer. I called. Town council, for four. Because I just wanted to open it and move on, but anyways. Item two, definitive subdivision for 92 Holland, continued. So I believe on the, was it the request of the applicant?
Yes.
On the request of the applicant, this is going to be continued to our, so I guess we decide we want to do it on June 12th. I don't know what our June 12th looks like.
So the applicant had requested additional quote for review and just the timing with that. And then to actually send it out, it's probably going to, in order to get the quote and then actually have them start on it, to do the work and review, it's going to be at least a month.
So we'll do it the 26th?
Yeah, and then start, yeah, that's what I would say.
Is there anyone here from 92 Holland?
We're butters on the...
Butters, or you with 92?
Yeah, we are butters.
Right, you're a butters and you are...
That's right, yeah.
You're at 92, right? Okay, so you guys requesting?
Well, I can't speak on his behalf.
Okay.
I'm required to provide...
Okay, okay. For record, can you come?
Yeah, well, if he's not answering any questions, it's fine.
You're going to, okay.
No, no, I'm just...
He's just here, all right. So just to note, and just to clarify, we're going to get an additional quote per the request of the applicant, but it's still the board's decision if we're going, what we're going to go with, depending on what that is. So it's, we will typically not, we'll entertain that and do that, but it still could mean that we might go with still with Apex or the higher one, depending on the, what we're getting for, what we need from those consultants. So I, if anyone has a motion to continue to the next meeting, the 26th?
26th, yeah. I move that we can continue a public hearing for 92 Holland to June 26th.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's it, yeah, so not till another month.
June 26th?
Item number three is the, let me just get that open. We got that layout update. Yep, notice of intent to the layout and alterations to a public roadway for sidewalks and roadway widening and pedestrian curb ramp construction. I'll read it up. The following roadway is South Precinct and Myrick's intersection, Rhode Island Road and Myrick's intersection, Rhode Island Road and La Barron Boulevard intersection, Johnson Drive and Rhode Island Road intersection, Harrison Ave and Rhode Island Road intersection, Rhode Island Road and Pine Ridge intersection, and Rhode Island Road and Bedford Street intersection, possible vote. So this is from the select board, and we're looking to make a, is it approval or a recommendation? Recommendation, so it's the, I'll just read this too, I guess, whatever. At the meeting, at the May, at the meeting of the May 19, 2025, select board voted its intent to lay out public roadway alterations in the location showroom plans entitled Layout Alteration Plan, Plan of Land for Rhode Island Road, Myrick Street, Precinct Street, Town of Lakeville, Massachusetts, dated May 9th, 2025, prepared by Daywood or Dowdwood in accordance with the requirements of Master and Law, 82, Section 81, point dash 24, all required by Master and Law, Chapter 41, Section 81G and 81I. The select board is hereby referring to the matter of the planning board for a non-binding recommendation. We have attached a copy for the notice of intent for the plans for their review. So I guess we'll, I don't know if anyone's taken a look at these. I think this has kind of been floating around there and now it's kind of being put on paper. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, John, this relates to the widening and reviving of...
Yes. So they've got to take some...
You could do the sidewalks first.
Yeah, easement, yeah.
Well, yeah, so they have to do some property taking.
Yeah, is this eminent domain?
Eminent domain, yeah.
When did these residents get notified?
They have been already, I believe.
Yeah. I think it was a couple of months ago, but it might have been in February. I don't recall what date, but they were informed, all the butters, and I think there were quite a few. You know, it's one of those things where the state is going to take, I don't know, I believe it's, in some areas, it's eight feet. In some areas, it's more than that, depending on the sightlines of the road, the curves, and so forth. So you've got that.
We've got bits on paving and all that.
No, this is all, this is all state.
This is all...
This is just for the property taking.
My understanding is that this is a town road, but the state is doing the work for 79.
Was this going to take place? Do we have a date yet? It dragged out for three years.
I'm not exactly sure on the date yet. I think these are just kind of like the preliminary, because it is a moving target right now in terms of, I mean, I think they started out in 2020 saying that it was going to be done in 2022, and then the spring of 2023, and now it's moved out more. I think the decision also that the state actually being very smart in terms of delaying this was a lot to do with the train project. And once the stations were opened and so forth, traffic is, I don't know this for a fact, but traffic I have noticed coming out of my driveway has been alleviated a lot in the mornings for 79 for people going to the train station. So now that Free Town's open, East Taunton, you know, people in the area, now they have a little bit more breathing room, but I don't know.
The funny thing is we're getting buses now.
What kind of buses?
From the T.
Oh.
Because they don't have the personnel to run the trains. And I've seen them coming down Rhode Island several times.
Yeah, yeah.
What are they for?
Because they can't run all the trains because they don't have the personnel to run them all. So there's been some trains that have been canceled, and they throw people on buses and take them up to Braintree.
Yeah, so, I mean, as a planning board, looking at...
I hear them every day, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, you hear them even more now, you know?
Kathy, is the time right on this to, for the public meeting? It says 9:00 AM on the 30th.
Yeah, 9:00 AM, yes. That was a notice of the public hearing.
Jumped out, jumped out at me, you know, being an odd time, it's a Friday morning.
Yeah.
I think it's just common for us, right?
Right, because I mean, this is all through the select board and there is, I know a strict time limit on it, so they're, they're doing everything to meet those timelines, so that's why it's probably at that time.
So, I mean, from a planning board perspective, I mean, we don't have unless residents here tonight want to speak on top of that, I mean, you know, the state is obviously, you know, dictating, yeah, exactly. You know, I mean, I did look at the plans, I mean, I thought that it actually filled in some holes in terms of some of the state's intentions with sidewalk placement, what properties along the route would be affected. I know that there are some intentions on moving telephone poles, which will be in some cases on opposite sides of the road. So that seems to be addressed. I know that this is kind of a, again, moving target. Things will be changing as we go along with this project. But just from my perspective, I mean, I have no comment on this other than, you know, it's taking place, so.
Yeah, generally, it's just slivers of land.
Except for the RV place, they're getting a big chunk.
Yeah, and I believe also the real estate, because I believe they're going to add in a turning lane for some of those areas as they widen it, and likely a new light for...
7918?
7918, which is desperately needed. I think that also is going to alleviate some of the bottleneck, so, yeah.
Yeah, the turn lane, definitely. Yeah, yeah. All right, so do I have a motion to?
So I make a motion that, I guess it's that we have no comment?
Or not approve it?
Recommend approval?
Recommend approval for the layout roadway alterations for the Route 79 project.
Good.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're on to agenda item number four, zoning board appeals petition, Lex Development, 10 Harding Street. So this is the 10 Harding Street we just approved. And the industrial on Route 44. They're looking to do a attached petition for hearing, was it for a special hearing? Is it a special zoning board appeals application for signs? looks to approval of a sign, so allow a sign with a maximum height of 25 feet as measured from the crown of the road. Allow a sign larger in area and higher than specified, and allow an electric message board that is 25 square feet, 12 square foot max, I guess is what the...
And this is a special permit, right?
Right. You guys all, got to take a look at that?
We, yeah, I was going to say, we issued the special permit, didn't we?
No, well, no, we didn't issue a special permit.
No, that stood the zoning board.
Zoning board, yeah.
This is coming before us because it's required to, right, for the sign fall into our review?
Yeah, it's just been...
It's pretty tall. Okay, that.
300 inches, so?
So this is unique because it's going to have the electronic message board, as you can see from item number two, plus you're going to have the 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14 tenants. And I assume those are just normal inserts with the lighting behind it. That would be electronic. Yeah, so...
Which one is the electric?
Number two.
Yeah, right under where it says 10 Harding.
The one that, I guess they're doing yoga, something in it.
Okay, so it's 18, it's 18 square feet?
Yep.
Is this within height requirements?
Well, beyond it. That's why they got a...
So what's the statute on this in terms of height? Do we recall? Because this is, this is kind of interesting because of the fact that it combines not only electronic, but also...
It's two-for.
It's a two-for-one, yeah. I'm trying to think of an instance of a sign here in town that is, has that many businesses listed, which I think need it. But if anything, if the sign can be cut down, because it looks like it's on two large piers, so you got a 50-inch pier...
Well, it's more than eight feet above the ground to begin with.
More than eight feet, yeah.
Before you get to the bottom.
So there's a couple of things. Is where the placement, because again, looking, if I'm coming out of 10 Harding Street, knowing how much of a cluster it is trying to get out into 44 where the pet store is...
Yeah, I'm trying to look at where the sign was in their plan.
Is the reason why, and I don't want to speculate, but is the reason why the sign is so high is so that you can see the oncoming traffic coming, you know, from one side? And that's the reason why they made it that high?
So it's right there at the corner, right? So it's a little, just shy of 17 feet off of Harding, off of the Harding Street, right?
Yep.
No, it's, it's on the property line, and then I don't know how far off of Harding Street it actually is. That property line is setback, right? That's a setback there?
Yep. Yeah, so, yeah, so it looks like it's almost 17 feet right off of the, right off of the curb cut.
No sign shall be located close than 10 feet from the nearest street right away, no close than 30 feet from the side or rear property lines? So we are within...
Maximum width?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
The width looks like it's 120 inches.
What if you...
Yeah, it's 10 feet wide.
Yeah, so signs shall be limited to a maximum height of 20 feet as measured from the crown of the road directly perpendicular to the sign.
What if you chopped off the top part, made it more horizontal? So you take off the top, 1, 2, 3, you put them on either side, and this...
You mean make it wider? I think it has a lot to do with the electronic sign because of the specifications of the electronic sign, because that's quite a lot of money.
What, to make it wider?
Yeah.
Why?
Well, the electronic portion is, you know, roughly 30 square feet, which is bigger than, than the allowable size for the entire sign, isn't it? Isn't the sign restriction for 40, or 32 square feet in total?
Because I'm trying to remember what the size is of the real estate one over here on 18 and 79. I don't think it's that wide. I, it might be the same size.
Well, you know, 32 square feet of sheet of plywood.
Yep.
And I think it's, it's probably close to eight feet wide, but it isn't four feet high. You know, so it's, so it's less than that. And I think the, you just read the 32, or 22 square feet for the...
That's what they said on the application.
Yeah.
22 square foot, 12, no, it's a 12-foot max.
Did you do something like that?
You know, take down some of this and take the three that are here, put them here, three that are here, put them here. And he still wants this piece, right?
I don't know if they're putting it up higher because, like you said, so you can kind of see like through it underneath it, so it's not blocking completely. So when you're coming on a millennium circle, you're not, you can kind of see to your right there.
Right.
Of course, the other thing to consider here too is, they're only kind of asking our opinion. And a lot of these, we've said, no comment.
Well, this one we have to bring up, the electronic sign, right?
Yeah, because that falls in our...
Is this sign wide open, is there any obstructions that need the sign?
Well, that's, that's a challenge because it is Route 44. You're, I want to say you're at the crest of that hill coming out.
So this could be visible if you took off it, if you made it more horizontal and vertical.
The problem is the electronic sign. You have to kind of have it be the same width as all the signage that's there, you know what I'm saying?
Well, in these, this is all basically just taking these things and putting them here. So they're all the same, it's just horizontal or vertical, so that cuts down the height.
So there is signage like this in Rainham on Route 44, for sure. I'm trying to think, as you go past the dealerships and everything, I believe there's one down towards where the Stop and Shop is. There's one like that, that's similar to this. I just don't know what the, recall what the height is, but this is kind of one of those special instances, so.
Well, we're not doing, I mean, we're not defending it back, you're not approving anything.
I know that, but I mean, is that what we would...
I think we would need some more clarification, but...
Order and say, try this?
The thing is, is depending, I mean, given the fact that it's so close to the road, because obviously it's a sign, it needs to be closer to the curb. And the challenge with Route 44, getting out of that driveway because of the volume of traffic, there is some blind spot as you look to the left, looking towards Lakeville. I think that's why they did it this way, but I think we would just need some more clarification.
I don't think, I don't think your sightlines are a problem. If you, if you look at the sightline here, you know, it's 16 feet back from their property line, and that's still another 20-some-odd feet from edge of pavement.
Okay.
Yeah, the island there still, you know, the concrete curb still sticks out beyond that. So there's, you're still pulling out anyways if you're taking a left-hand turn, right? Taking a right-hand turn, you're not worried about it if you're looking the other way.
So not so much for like vehicular traffic, but more so like any tractor-trailers that might be coming out there?
Yeah, they would...
They would have...
Be sitting up higher, and they don't have trouble with anything. But again, I think if you look to see where they would pull out, they would be pulled out beyond it.
Yep, okay, all right. So from the state's safety perspective?
I think we're okay.
We're okay, yep.
Just the height is the issue?
Well, yeah, I mean, if they cut down the piers...
It's really the height and the overall size of it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's pretty huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you reduce the height, that would make it more in line?
I think so.
Cut out the piers, take those three and...
And again, the only reason why I say, why it might have been put up higher is just because of the traffic issue. Other than that, if the team feels, you know...
But the zoning ordinance says 20 feet above the crown of the road?
Yep.
Is it, and this is twenty-four, so it's.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five, it, it, I mean, it's not egregious.
No.
You know, and, and he could, you know, they could, they could drop it down a couple feet.
Yeah.
So that it's not eight feet to the bottom of it. Six feet to the bottom of it, that would be fine, you know? But again, this is just going before ZBA, we really have no.
Yeah, right.
But we want to make a, so we'll, um, we want to make.
Well, usually, and generally, if the board has actually had action on this, and if it's a business or commercial, you usually do comment. That's been kind of the max practice.
Okay.
So we might want to make a comment.
What, the electronic?
About just.
The height?
The height. I, I think everything else looks fine. I mean, you know, given the fact that how they're advertising the businesses.
It's eighteen.
Yep, that is, that's about normal, I think, for multiple businesses going into something like this, you know, so, um.
The, the only other thing too, though, is another part of their, uh, another part of their application is for the signage that's on the building.
Yeah, and they don't give, they don't list dimensions on that.
Yeah, I was just looking, kind of question mark. It, it, it's kind of, no, uh, we want some, we want some numbers there.
Yeah.
All right, so as, so we're gonna make a, make a comment, but let's first, so.
Yeah, what's the comments is?
So, so the first one would be.
The height?
The height of the sign to maybe have it come down, what, a couple feet?
Yeah, they could, they could easily come down two feet without.
Yep.
Without compromising much.
Yeah.
Or at all.
Cause it would come down three feet or move the electronic message board sign, so.
Anybody got any idea of a hot U or is a hot Pilates?
Yeah, yeah. Different meaning, Jack.
We gotta edit that out, don't we?
It woke everybody up on TV.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll make that recommendation. The other one was, uh, the second one was, uh.
It's the area too, right? What's the square area of this?
Did we object to the sign on the, on the face of the building?
Yeah, we're gonna get to that, we're just, um. So the scale says one twenty, one hundred and twenty inches?
This is not a lit, lit sign, is it?
Yes, it's backlit.
Oh, yeah.
Or you mean the one on the, on the building?
Yeah.
Oh, so the crown is a hundred and twenty inches, so the, um.
Doesn't look.
It's a hundred and eight inches in between, so yeah.
No, it's not back, it's not backlit, is it, David?
No, it doesn't appear to be. Oh, wait a minute, yes.
I mean. Wouldn't you want it backlit or some kind, I mean, how do you see the sign? On the face of the building?
We're, no, we're, we're talking about the, the main sign first, and then we'll talk about the, the building ones in a second.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
We're still back on the.
So I, I, I suppose another comment we could give them is, is that, you know, we're concerned about, uh, the overall size of, of it, setting a precedent for future signage.
Yep.
Well, he's gonna say, what do you mean by that? You say height, don't you have to identify?
Well, I said size. We've already said, you know, reduce the height. We're recommending, you know, drop it down at least two feet or so.
Yep, okay.
But then in terms of its overall size, you know, if it could be squeezed down a little bit because we're concerned about precedent. I mean.
Yep.
It is, the, the one thing that they have going for them is it's on forty-four.
Right.
So it's a much different environment than, than the rest of the town.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, but you'd hate to have somebody point to that and say, well, look, you know, look, look what you did there.
Right, right.
Each one of the panels though is only eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Eight inches tall by.
Yeah, a foot and a half by five feet. For, for each one of the tenants.
Fourteen plus the message board.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so.
No, it's.
Yep.
Cause the overall thing would be ten feet wide.
Yeah.
It's nine feet.
Yeah, but there's two, two tunnels side by side, so it's not five feet, it's two and a half feet, right? Two and a half feet by eighteen.
No, no, cause the overall.
See if the top is just one twenty?
Yep, that's, okay, yeah.
Five by two feet and shrink it down a little bit.
One oh, one oh eight, one oh eight is nine feet, so they're four and a half feet by.
Yeah, it's like this is, is because this is the size of the.
We're, we're talking about inches.
Well, yeah, three feet, right?
We're, yeah.
Was four feet said big by that, I mean. To be seen on the road as you're whizzing by on the, on your cell phone or doing whatever else you're doing.
Eighteen of them to.
All right, all right, let's, let's read them in here real quick. So what are we sending here to the, this is going to the ZBA?
ZBA.
Yeah.
Reduction.
Yeah, comments, yeah, we, so I, the reduction, so we're gonna send to the ZBA, the, we'd like to see a reduction in height.
Yep.
As well, as well as, uh, overall height of the sign, like bring the sign down lower.
Yep.
And then as well as, you know, a little bit of, I mean, they can get a little bit of reduction. So I guess with the message board sign, are we, are we asking them to not, we're telling them not to do that? Cause I was, when I was reading through it. I thought I saw that.
Did we, uh?
Freestanding signs are permitted to have either a changeable copy sign or electronic message board as, as part of the sign, but not both? Isn't that one of the items?
Did we vote against that?
I saw, uh.
Six, six, three, ten? Am I reading it wrong? General sign requirements?
What was it, John?
Six, six, three, ten?
John, we're gonna have them drop the sat, the height of those columns?
Yeah, we're asking, we're asking to lower it.
That's eight, oh, eight feet they, we, we. Question is, do you need eight feet? Could you bring it down a little?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it, you know, it could, that could only be, that could very easily be six feet and be fine.
That's eight by one thirty-nine plus forty-one, plus eighteen, sixteen.
I didn't see that one.
Yeah.
Am I reading the wrong one?
We haven't had many situations where that's cropped up, so. So it's gotta be either or, right?
That's what it says on.
And when, when was this? Twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, was there a newer one? Yeah, what's the latest one?
So.
That's a twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
So in that instance.
Well, they're asking for an approval for that, so I'm gonna say, allow an electronic message board that is twenty-two square feet, twelve foot. I'm assuming there's the twelve foot max, is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah, because that, that would be in alignment with the one by the real estate company. That's, that's twelve feet.
Twelve square feet?
Yeah.
Three by four, whatever you wanna call it. This one's, they're looking for. It's three by nine, but. Right, three by, well, they see it's weird here, cause it says that the sign is, yeah, three feet by nine feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty.
Yeah, viewing size.
It's twenty-seven square feet. Right?
Yep.
It's not twenty-two.
No.
Yeah, so this, this. All right, so I guess the comments are, we'd, we'd like it to be lower.
Yeah.
Kathy, and then, so, um, lower, and the electronic message board sign, they've listed as twenty-two feet, but on their form, it says that it's three feet by nine feet, the viewing size of the, uh. Right?
Yep, the viewing size of the.
Viewing size of that is thirty-six inches by nine feet long, so that's twenty-seven feet.
Yep.
John, if you put in lower, they're gonna say, by how much? Do we have to give them some parameters?
Well, we want it, so again, we'd, we'd like it.
You gotta tell them, because they're gonna say so.
So they want it larger as well, so if they reduce it, it'll be lower. But. I don't, I don't mind it being, I guess, like, bigger or higher, maybe just not, not both, right?
Right.
Like, we're not, um, I would say, I don't mind it being bigger as long as it's lower, but then I don't know if we're gonna, if we're gonna start cutting off sight lines.
What do you mean by bigger?
Huh?
What do you mean by bigger?
They're, they're requesting it to be larger, allow us, allow a larger sign in, in area and, and higher than specified. Cause I think they're only allowed thirty-two square feet. And right now, they have, was it, I don't know what that number was, one forty-seven?
What is it?
Sixteen feet by nine feet.
Yeah, it's more like twenty-seven square feet, but they're.
Little way by.
I don't know.
A little way by one thirty, maybe.
It's eleven feet. Hundred and four square feet. Right, cause this sign's like way bigger than what's allowed, right? Typically, like.
Yeah.
By leaps and bounds, right?
Yep.
So I, I think, I think they need to reduce the sign if they reduce the size of the sign, and it'll bring it down to the height that we need it to be. So I just, I mean, I don't, I think this is too, again, I, I don't mind it being slightly bigger or, or slightly higher, but I think it needs to be one or the other. I don't think it's, now it's, it's just a monstrosity compared to what's out there. Unless I'm missing something in this.
I think part of the monstrosity part is the, the eight feet pillars. That's.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, it's like way heavier than it's has.
So.
They need to reduce that.
Our comments are, yeah, we, we don't like that, that height, and I guess they don't list the overall square footage of the, of the sign, right? Uh, doing the math, though?
Well, you can easily figure it out. Oh, yeah, what's a hundred and thirty inches?
Like eleven feet and change.
That's eleven.
Eleven and a half feet, about that?
It's eleven by nine?
Yeah, one oh eight, right?
Yeah, not, yeah, one.
Not including like the.
Yeah. And what's this, what's our standard, or?
One oh, one eleven, actually.
One oh one.
Their standard was thirty-two square feet, but I may be wrong on that.
Oh, there are signs in this common, yeah, common directory sign for business industrial subdivisions that have one entrance sign not being a directory sign. In addition to the above, signs for a common directory sign for business, maybe doubled, maybe double-sided in a maximum of sixty-four square feet in the area. But we're, we're trying to do it all on one side. I'm assuming it's gonna be double-sided anyways, but it's gonna have, right, am I, am I right?
Right, right.
This is nine feet by eleven, by twelve feet?
Yeah.
Nine by eleven?
Still benefits added of one-sided.
Yeah. All right, um, so I guess we're sending comments back to the ZBA, right? That's what we're doing, sending comments back?
Yeah.
So I guess our, our first comment would be, you know, we, the, the overall size is well beyond what our limitations are, so that, um, it's, you know, again, the.
Decrease height?
The additional five feet in height doesn't, I don't think is, is that big of a deal, but it's just, it's a large sign that ends up being just huge, um.
Then we step to the ground, you say we want to reduce the pillars from eight feet to?
Six, five or six.
Six, five, five, six feet?
Yeah, let's do six.
Six feet?
Yeah.
Um.
Then we want the overall, then we want.
Height reduced.
Yep.
Closer, yeah. The electronic message board sign appears to be larger than what was on the application.
Yeah.
Three feet.
Twenty-seven feet versus the twenty-two that's listed.
Three feet by nine feet.
And then, there are no, no dimensions for the, um, proposed signs on the building.
Do we have definitive specifications for the, uh, the dimensions for reader board? Cause this is twenty-seven feet, square feet, right? Nine by, nine by three.
For the message board, yes, twenty-seven square feet, according, according to the dimensions. They say it's only twenty-two, but.
What's the one down here at the, the real?
Common directory signs may be allowed to have one additional internally illuminated panel or business not to exceed twelve square feet. Changeable copy signs and electronic message board signs shall not exceed twelve square feet. Only one of these types of signs are permitted per property.
Well.
So I guess they, they are allowed the sign, they're just not allowed bigger than twelve feet, so they want it larger. So again, we don't, we're not big fans of the electronically.
The last Vegas, uh.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's forty-four, so I'm not, it's a little different of an area, it's an industrial zoned area, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be the largest sign.
Yeah.
And with a, a larger electric, well, you know, electronic message board. So again, we want to see that, and then dimensions on the, uh.
The building signs?
On the building signs.
Yeah, cause there's question marks here, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
There's no dimensions on that.
Yeah, I think that's good, um.
Motion. Send those comments.
So moved.
Message to send those comments to, uh, ZBA?
Yes.
Maybe the planning board?
The sign's too big.
Yeah.
It's a long way around, yes. So, so moved, so I have a motion.
Motion to say the sign's too damn big.
So I have a motion, do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You'll be happy.
Motion.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, um. Number six, approve the February twenty twenty-seven, on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Yep.
Does anyone have any comments on those?
Mr. Chairman, can I interject here?
Ice chair, yeah, go ahead.
Whatever. Did we even agree on this sign? Whether it should be backlit or not, or we don't care?
No, no, we have.
Light, younger? We should have liked that, baby.
No, no, no. That's not it.
Actually prefer that it not be lit.
Yeah.
So this is February twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Meeting minutes. I did not have any comments on this particular one. So it looks good to me.
Yep. So we have a motion?
So, uh, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, uh, meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion granted. March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Yep, March thirteenth. Yep, March thirteenth, I also did not have, um, any changes to this, uh, pretty straightforward, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
No. I was, I was good with them.
All right.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, we approved the minutes of the Thursday, March thirteenth meeting?
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Sorry, lost my agenda. Um, all right, item number seven, site plan review, ADU form fee, possible vote. Um, I know we had this application, but I, I kinda did wanna wait till, uh, Sheena McCracken is back, so, um, do we need to make any motion for that, or no, we just, cause possible vote?
Just continue?
Yeah, we'll continue it. Um, as well as the inspections, I guess, for both items for number seven, I think we'll, we'll hold off until the, the June twelfth, uh, meeting to discuss those.
And she might have some more updates on that too, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, all right, so, oh, I missed number five, I apologize. Um, zoning bylaw advisory committee.
Yep.
Discussion, possible vote, think this was unconceived that, find it, I'm not used to having paper. I got it ready, yeah, thank you. The town of Lakeville shall establish a zoning bylaw review advisory committee to review our existing zoning bylaw in effort to update and clarify it, as well as to consider additional zoning changes that may become evident within the review process. The committee shall be comprised of seven members to be appointed by the select board. Members shall include the director of inspectional services, one select board member or their designee, uh, one planning board member, one appeals board member, one board of health member, one conservation commission member, and one at-large member. Uh, appointments shall be for a one-year term and expire on Ju- July thirty-first of each year. The committee shall report any recommendations, it may develop, um, to the planning board for consideration and anticipation of town meeting.
So with regards to this, and Kathy, I'm gonna ask you this question, what is the commitment for this? Like, how often is this, um, gonna happen? Like, it's, it's gonna be obviously not a joint meeting, but it's going to be a, a meeting with the.
Yeah, I'm really not sure. I mean, I would think monthly, but.
Okay.
I can certainly check with Tracy to see what kind of time commitment that would be.
Yeah.
And let you know for the next meeting.
Um, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind serving on this, um, but I would prefer to wait till we have.
Yeah, I think we have more information.
To have a discussion on it, so.
I think that's, uh, the right move, so, like, do we need to make a motion, we don't need to make a motion?
No, just continue.
We'll table this again until six twelve, it'll be a busy, like, we don't have much, do we have a lot of them on that meeting?
Oh, yeah. Cause now you have two and four.
Yeah.
You've got one sixty bad fit street.
Oh, and Amy's gonna be there too.
Other stuff, um, yeah.
That's fine, a lot of this stuff is like, yeah, it'll be a long meeting.
Yeah.
We're gonna get, we're gonna, oh, that was, is the one that's gonna start early?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll start early, and, well, at the same time, we'll just start early. Fine, that's right.
Sounds good.
Um, all right, uh, item number seven, site plan review, ADU form fee, possible vote, again, those were, we're gonna move on. Uh, item number eight, ministry of update, uh, open space plan?
So, with this?
Yeah, that, that wasn't in there, John, I think that was just emailed out to you if you, if the board had any comments regarding it.
Uh, yeah, um. Was this the one that was also discussed with the select board as well?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
When was that sent out?
Hmm. Probably a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Hold on, does anyone have any comments on it? Again, maybe because cheers, we got to turn him, but we just, again, we just table all this stuff till I get back.
I would recommend definitely tabling the open space one, cause I know that there's been a lot of discussion on that, so.
And then now the, uh, rules and regs update, same thing, right? Um, no updates on those, right?
Um, I think the kickoff meeting is supposed to be June twenty-four.
Yeah.
I recall, it might be July, I'm trying to see the board in my head, I sure wrote it down, I didn't.
Okay, um, and then there's the Simon's Hill update conceptual plan, you guys all see the plan that was?
Mm-hmm.
It's kinda similar, we, we kinda seen this when they were looking at the, uh, the OSRD, possible, so this is, again, very similar to what they're, what they're looking to do, um. And the second plan gives you the affordable lots.
Jeez.
Yeah, this is different than what he proposed.
I was gonna say.
Originally for the forty B.
Yeah.
These are all single families.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the second sheet.
So once again, water issue. Um.
Who's the Native American?
Well. Go ahead, yes.
So just to let you know, the, the hearings for this have started again with the zoning board, they're being held at Loom Pon Lodge right now.
Okay.
They're like, um, right now they're one, one Monday of the month, the, the schedule's on the website. So if you're interested in this, in attending those, and this is the plan that they provided, it's still just a conceptual at their last meeting of the direction, I guess, that they wanna go in.
Okay. Last week's ZBA rule?
Yes.
Okay.
You know where the Native American area is?
No, no, they, they, it, it's not on here, and so it's been something that's.
Hmm.
They don't wanna reveal, not the developer, the, the, the Indian, Indians don't wanna reveal it.
Yeah, the Native American, the, the tribe does not want to disclose, make public, disclose the locations that they have, they're afraid of the public going out there and disturbing it.
Yep.
So they're kinda trying to keep it that, keep it that close.
Yeah.
So I assume the Native American folks have seen this, later, okay with it?
I know that quora from the Marigantet, um, tribe has spoken at these meetings, has provided detailed information, I think there's also some state stuff that's been disclosed as well in terms of potential areas, not the exact areas, but where it could fall.
Yep.
Um. It's a big issue. You got the vernal pools.
Yep.
Uh, the copious amounts of wetlands that surround a lot of the properties, um, which is a huge conservation issue, in my opinion, um.
Got a good number of, of housing here, huh?
I think that was the old one. Right, the, yeah, the other plan that was in there was from before, that's from like two years ago, right?
Yeah. So is this the new one?
The new one top, right, yeah, April fourteenth.
No, that was.
That's the old one.
That's the old one, so this one has a lot more housing on it.
There's a hundred, hundred and seventy-six houses.
Yeah.
On the new one. The old one was a mix of.
Forty-six duplex.
Yeah.
Um, hundred and ten condos, forty-four single family, so it's two hundred units total, and we're at a hundred and seventy-six now.
But in some ways, it looks like the, the, uh, new plan, uh, occupies more land.
It does.
Still, still intake out this.
There's, there's more.
Yep.
More disturbance.
Yeah, over in here.
So fifty-two thousand gallon per day wastewater treatment.
You think so, David?
Did I hear during that meeting at ZBA that wells would be.
Yeah, see now he's.
Drilled if they couldn't get city water up there, New Bedford water too? I mean, that was another thing.
And that mean, and he's bringing, he's putting a lot more housing here.
Right.
Look at that.
Right, cause that's, that's the one dry area that he's really has, is, is up in here.
Out the school system and the water can handle.
Well, yeah, because there, there were, in that hundred and seventy-six single family homes, I would think you would end up with more kids than you would in this plan that has some townhouse condos and.
You wait till they build the.
Some duplexes, yeah.
Hospital, yeah, three hundred and two units.
Yeah.
When it's all done.
I don't know.
Yeah. All right, um.
So this was just information for us.
Information, yeah, administrative update, and then, so I guess we're gonna confirm a quorum for the six twenty-six and summer meeting, so. I think I'm good for the six twenty-six, I had, I was, I actually drafted up an email to you and, um, Michelle, and was realizing that I, I was mixing up my dates for, uh, town baseball closing ceremonies.
Oh.
It was last year, so I was like, I'm not missing it, so, but that's on the twenty-fifth, rain date's twenty-six, I'm, I'm tentatively, I'm, I'm good for twenty-six, but.
Cool.
I guess we just wanna discuss if, um, for summer vacations, if people are taking any time and we're gonna miss meetings, just make sure that we have a quorum.
Yep.
Especially, um, I'm hoping to, and for Bedford Street is done before the summer.
Yeah.
We should be done before, hopefully, uh.
Yep.
I think I, I think I'm good anyways after that one, um, so yeah, if there's anything else, maybe we have to, maybe, if you have planned, uh, vacations, that we just do that, to make sure that we have a quorum. Not to, not to close, so we can do the meetings.
I'll, um, I have one in, um, in, uh, I think it's the second week of, uh, June, but I, I'll let the, I'll let the team know.
Okay. And then I guess the, um, Surf Ed Commission, uh, member appointment. Just see, let me have it, oh, yeah. Well, I guess this is, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, Surf Ed, uh, Commission, so. I guess they're looking for, we need to have a member appointed?
Well, I'm so, I just doing this right now, so I guess if he wanted to continue.
Do you wanna continue?
Yeah, I've, I've, you know, I can continue on it.
Um.
Thank you, David.
A lot of work. So do we need to like vote on that, or we just gonna, we do have to vote on that? Should we wait till Michelle comes, or?
Yeah.
I, I'll, I'll.
It's a little short item, so.
Yeah, we can vote on that real quick at the end, right? What, do we vote now?
I, I think you can vote on it now, I don't.
Yeah, I don't think she's, she's already jumping and saying. I don't think she's jumping, yeah, so, all right.
We're great. Um, I make a motion to, uh, appoint David Lodge again for the Spread Commission member appointment.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, David.
Yep, thank you, David. And then, um, all right, so next meeting will be June, oh, yeah, wait, oh, discuss the June, I keep skipping items, I'm not used to it. So, uh, the June twelfth meeting, so I think we had talked before, Jack, we are, and I think, was Michelle okay with it, or do we know that?
Yeah, I think so.
Michelle's okay, so the June twelfth, our next meeting, um, we're gonna start at six PM.
Yeah.
So that way, um, cause I think it's the zoning board.
Yes.
Board of Appeals meeting, and so that way Kathy can be here for the first hour, even though you're gonna miss, I mean, you'll probably see some of the fireworks at the beginning, but, um, to see most, some of the meetings, we'll just leave for that one, just to make it, to start a little earlier that one.
You bet.
All right, so that sounds good, so we'll, we'll do that six o'clock, so the next meeting will be June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at the Lakeville Police Station at six PM. Um, any other business, or any other?
No.
No?
No.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight oh five PM.
Have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe, we adjourned.